Borough South River, Mayor and Council. I pledge allegiance to the Republic of America.
In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, where this is made in the House of South River Middle School Cathedral, Raymond O'Grady, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on December 18, 2023, posted on the School Building Learning Board, the Borough Website, and the chapter of South River Middle School, Raymond O'Grady, South River.
Thank you. You is officially called the order. And Mayor elect.
Aye.
Aye.
I Peter can. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
That I will true.
True faith.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the government.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
In this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully.
And I faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
All duties of the office of.
All duties of the office of.
The Mayor of the Borough South River.
The Mayor of the South.
The Borough South River.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Aye.
Aye.
James Kretzky.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the Borough.
South River Councilmember.
All the duties of the Borough Council.
Councilmember.
According.
To the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you, Zinian. Aye, Henry Zinian.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear.
And that I will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
The Borough South River Councilmember.
The Borough South River Councilmember.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
This is Aiden Darrell. I'd like to do the oath for the Borough's Second Assistant Chief, Scott Wolf.
I don't believe he's here, so we're going to.
In that case, we're going to move to First Assistant Fire Chief, William Smith.
Aye, William Smith.
Aye, William Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
And I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
First Assistant Fire Chief.
First Assistant Fire Chief.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This is Aiden Darrell. The oath for Fire Chief Greg Miller.
Aye.
Aye.
Greg A. Miller.
Greg A. Miller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
That I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority.
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
South River Fire Station Number One Chief. South River.
South River.
Fire Station.
Fire Station One Chief.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Does he all stand up for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance. To the United States of America. To the Father, to the Father who has sent us here. To the nation, to the God, and to this world. For the sake of justice.
Moment silence.
Mayor Diddy.
Here.
Councilman Ballas.
Here.
Councilman Sula.
Here.
Councilman Zinian.
Here.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yeah.
Councilman Crenzel.
Here.
Councilman Oliver.
Here.
Now, we're going to go into Mayor's comments.
Good afternoon. Happy New Year. Hope everyone had a great night. Quite a few people like to recognize in this room before I get started. Council. First and foremost, my wife Maggie, my daughter's Emma and Callie. Milltown Mayor George Murray. Judge Levland, I know some. Welcome. And a good, great, friend of mine, special guest. You know, when I first started politics, I was just a kid, actually, in the school, where I got appointed by the late Chief I back in eighty, eighty-eight into ninety-one. I was put on the municipal lines. Who would have ever figured I'm going to stand up here today? Years later, I was asked to actually run for council, which was in ninety-nine into two thousand. Unfortunately, as much as it sounded like it was a glamorous thing. As much as it sounded like a great thing to do, I backed down. I told myself that just because I'm a South River resident, I really needed to learn what South River was about. So I ended up being put on the planning board. Thanks to Tony. And from that point on, I learned so much about the world of development. This is what got me so intrigued with how South River is now growing. But we're going to make it grow even more. Within the two or three years, I had the opportunity to learn so much from so many architects, developers, engineers, planners, new names that I didn't. At the time, I was doing this all on my own. Within the first three years or four, I got to meet somebody. I'll never forget her father till today. I hear him still saying this, but you're dating Peter and you're dating South River. And the reason, because he knew how much I was invested in this town. This is home. As the years went on, I joined more membership, more committees. The committees consisted of the Economic Development Commission, Broad South Rivers Cruise Night, and district. I even joined the South River Fire Department. And if that wasn't enough, we got engaged. And I remember her saying, if you're going to stay in South River, I said, absolutely. This is where I grew up. This is my home. Bought a house, got married. Now came the big question. I'm going to run for council. I'm ready for this. So we did. Won handsomely. Then she stood by my side regardless of what the circumstances were. Because then I first turned to my second. We're expecting our first child. You would have thought she was going to say no, but she didn't. She stood by my side. We had our second child. I had my second. Win. Handsome. Great campaign that year. Came to my third, and I did the wise thing because now we're expecting a second. I said, I'm going to step down. But I held on to South River's committees. Planning Board, Economic Development Commission, municipal lines. I did it. Four years later, I decided I was going to come back. Came back with the ex-mayor Ray Allen. And I couldn't have a better year coming back. And we won handsomely. She stood by my side regardless of what the circumstances were. Came down to my fourth turn. Did it again. She was still there. She stood by me. The only difference now is I had two little kids that were growing up in a world of politics. They didn't know nothing more than just that. Then a year ago this time, I remember mentioning I was going to run for mayor. I could tell you, during dinner, and I was expecting a total negative side of her, but she pushed me. She, she motivated me to do what I wish. And I don't know how to thank you many for what you have done. Love you. New chapter in our life. Now, like I said, started this a year ago when I told my family I was going to run for mayor. I'll never forget my daughter Emma. She did something that I never thought she would do. She ran out of the kitchen pretty upset. So rightfully so, she had this one comment that I'm going to say this out loud to everybody in this room. And the comment that she said to me was, you're never going to be around anymore. This is something I learned, especially from you, Ray, right? That we hold a law, we hold a rule, and the rule is simple. Whether you're in the political arena, you're a first responder, you hold a members committee person, whatever they be, the one thing that we all stand by is family comes first. That kind of easter up, but two days later, here I am coming home and I got my dog waiting at the door like normal. And next to my dog happens to be my daughter Emma. And she had a lot of paperwork on her showing me how excited she is that I'm running for mayor. She did a full-blown report on what the mayor's position is. This is my thirteen-year-old. So she asked me what we had to do. We had a long trip ahead of us. It was going to take two miracles. First miracle was the project. We knew we were up against a really, really hard battle. John Crenzel has been a longstanding mayor and has been a very well-decorated person. He has been a fixture in this town. But it was time for a new look and a new holder. Look at South River growing, growing into this new future. She helped me. She helped me in every possible way. Through campaigning, through going through all my advertisements, going through social media, going through Mean Glee, holding a camera. She did it. We won. Okay, now miracle number two. Miracle number two is going to be a little bit more difficult. We have to get the whole party together. And we have to work with this whole entire town. Move the town forward to a new vision, to a bolder look. We won. Succeed. I could tell you this much. Here's a thirteen-year-old daughter. That did not need to be doing. She didn't have to be with me doing this. She could have been with her friends. I'm sure you had Frankie's ear teaching her everything about politics. Because that's what she did. She stood by my side. Emma, I cannot thank you enough. There's not enough words in the world to tell you how much I love what you did. And we have a long way to go to make this town better. I try. They always say, where there's a good one, there's a bad one. Ah, exactly. My nine-year-old defines three words. Motivation, determination, and aggressive. And the reason I say that is because of what she did. She was a little girl in a school that she would approach each kid that lived in South River and tell them, you better go home and tell your mom and dad to go to your apartment. And I was getting phone calls from parents and teachers telling me what this little kid was doing. She went to so many mean reasons. I have to tell you, Cindy, I remember we went out walking. Started at seven-thirty in the morning. We walked so many steps that I think my watch stopped working after twelve o'clock. Around three o'clock, we came home. We had to eat. Have to eat. I dozed off like any old person would do to wake up to her standing over me saying, you're not done yet. You still have to go out and walk. Callie, I cannot thank you for what you have done. The last thing I'm going to tell you about Callie, she actually motivated me to do this was the night of the election, after all the numbers came in, and we looked really dirty. I remember her sitting on my lap and she was still teary-eyed. And I asked her what the problem was. The problem was that she was disappointed that we're not going to walk anymore. She motivated me to do something that's going to be creative. And that is that, yes, we are, but we still walk. As the new mayor, we're going to go to the residents. I want them to see who I am. And for that matter, the rest of the town. We're going to let them know. We're out there with the residents. So yes, we are walking. Honey, I love you so much for what you've done. So to Mr. Dominicki. He has won the year five times. Four as council, one as the mayor. I can't have a better person swearing in. And I keep joking with him, telling him that one day we're going to go to the mansion together. Mr. Dominicki, thank you for being there. To my two candidates, Jim Christian T. and Peter Zinian. We had such a great time walking here. We learned a lot. I know this is a learning curve for you. We're all here working together. We're going to make this happen. We want to move South River forward. Jim, no words could express my thanks to you. What you don't know about Jim is he has been a long-life resident and he has served for the town in so many different ways. He has been a councilman several times. But one thing I've always had respect for Jim, until today, I still call him sir, is the idea that he has served for our country. I have the most utmost respect for you with just that. Thank you, sir, for taking this. I would like to take the opportunity to thank you all for coming today. It means a lot to me to have your support as we begin my tenure as mayor and as we begin the new year in South River. As your mayor, I would like to build a foundation set by my predecessors, former mayor John Crenzel and council members. We have high hopes for the future of South River. It is my hope that as we as council can work together regardless of party lines along with the residents of South River to move the borough into a better and more prosperous future. We can begin this encouragement. At, with encouragement, sorry. We can begin this encouraging economic development within the borough. It is absolutely imperative that the borough continues to move forward and change with the times. We cannot remain stagnant and wait while the borough changes and progresses around us. We also understand the concerns you continue to have about our town. We do hear what you're saying. One of the biggest concerns and priorities is the state of the water infrastructure in the borough. We have already begun to work on the infrastructure. We are moving forward to repairing water lines in phases. We will get this work done. A recreational facility for the children of the borough is another priority. We are actively looking for opportunities to develop and move forward. I plan to open a borough rec center. This way, the children have a place to go where they can learn, interact, and grow. These children are the future of South River. There is also a focus on enhancing services for residents of South River in the borough offices. Everything from exceptional customer service to prompt turnaround times, again, all in the interest of moving South River forward. As mayor, I plan to hold a forum to give residents the opportunity to be as involved in the community and to have your voices heard. All are welcome to bring your concerns. No concern is too big or too small. Most importantly, any ideas you have to improve the borough are welcome. The decision of who sits in the mayor's seats is made by you. It is a new year, and now it's time to work with us to move South River into the future. We will work together to make that happen. But community involvement, your involvement is needed. We encourage you to reach out to us, whether through monthly, sorry, whether through forum by coming to the council meetings, calling, emailing, texting, whatever you could do to get to us, we're here for you. Our doors are here. We work for you. You don't work for us. We're always here, no matter what. I thank you. I thank you for coming out today and showing your support. And I look forward to working with you throughout the term as mayor fulfilling our hopes for the future of South River. And I have one more thank you. This was a question that my daughter Callie once asked me while we were in the truck. Who is your hero? And I answered her, saying, the whole. Remember that? Of course, I never answered her question by reverse, but she gave me an answer right away. I'm not going to tell you who it was. But here's your answer. My hero is a person that stood me up. He stood me up and taught me how to walk. He showed me a path. My hero told me, showed me, that no matter what comes at you, how it comes at you, your one job, one job is to make things work. Don't let distractions trap you. My hero, if I fell back, he stood me back up. My hero, if I fell to the side, he stood me up. He was there for me no matter what the odds were. My hero showed me how to get where I am today. He brought me. My hero is the person that watched me and my two brothers grow. My hero is a ninety-year-old man. Last past year, he not only came out and campaigned with me, he even went out and put outside. He went with me to Mean Glee. He was on social media, which I would have never thought, and it was pushing my name like it was going outside. Dad, I cannot thank you enough for what you have done for me and what you continue to do for us. I love you so much. Once again, thank you again for coming. Have a happy and healthy new year. Look forward to working with you. We're always here for you. Jim, we are all in this.
Well, as many of you know, I'm pretty long-winded. I'd like to thank you all very much for all your support and everything. We're gonna keep moving forward. I started wondering this morning, do I scratch my head and I says, geez. It's almost been a half a century that there's been a government service between federal, state, and local, and it's worked its time out. Once again, everyone in Borough South River, thank you for all your support. We will continue to work forward, and we're here for you.
Councilman Thiebault.
So, I had my paper that I prepared, but this is a prime example of working with this group. Of course, I'm a little nervous. But Peter comes up at Liz, so I'm gonna do a little bit of that to learn. So, he's teaching me, if he can teach me right now. Before I read this, I remember we were back in February. So, my phone rings, and it's Tony Seal, the council president, and it says to me, "We, the council, think you would be a good candidate," he knew me from high school, "to run for council in town." Pretty much just stood there for a second, like, whoa. You know, grew up in this town, and then just had that feeling of, wow. Told him, yes, the rest is history. I got to know, I went to high school with almost all of them. I got to know them on a different level and had a wonderful time running for the election and learned a lot. Bible that I have here today is a Bible I found in my mom's room. And it's a Bible that was given to her, but she was probably like thirty or forty from the church. So, I use that today. So, that's my emotional part for today, because they're not here. But I'm sure she would be very, looking down, would be very proud of the accomplishments that I have, that I can serve to the town that she lived in her whole life. I wish to thank everyone for the great honor of electing me to serve on the Borough Council. Having lived in South River for over sixty years, I know the town well and will do the best for it and all of its residents. I realize full well the responsibilities and importance of this position, and I look forward to the opportunity to give back to my hometown. That's the key thing, to give back. After living here my whole life, is to give back, to do what I can for all the residents. Thanks again for your support, trust, and confidence, and a happy and healthy, prosperous new year to all. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna be opening up the nominations for council member, council president, please.
I'd nominate Jason Olivera.
Second.
Nomination made by Councilman Seal, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas. Is there any other nominations? Mrs. Tager.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dazemian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Grchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krenzel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Olivera?
Yes.
Council president?
So, first and foremost, I wanna thank everyone for coming today. In Mayor Andy's remarks, he mentioned about moving forward and making sure that we take the path together. Over the next year, you know, it's not gonna be easy. There's a lot of items that need to be completed, whether it's the water, getting a home for our children in town with the rec center. But one thing I do know is that we do have a mayor that's gonna roll up the sleeves and be right by our side. To the council, to Mayor Peter, thank you for trusting me with this responsibility. Tony, you've set a great example of what we should be doing, and I look forward to following in your footsteps. Let's get our hands dirty and get to work.
Mrs. Tager, open your seat.
Organizational consent resolutions, twenty twenty-four dash one, twenty twenty-four dash five. One, rules of council. Two, council liaisons. Three, twenty twenty-four meeting schedule. Four, twenty twenty-four temporary budget. Five, official newspapers. Six, appoint borough attorney. Seven, appoint borough engineer. Eight, appoint borough prosecutor. And nine, appoint borough planner.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Ballas, seconded by Councilwoman Olivera.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dazemian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Grchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krenzel?
Yes, stay on the number eight.
Councilwoman President Olivera?
Yes.
We are going to open the floor to a public, in ten minutes. Please, if they can make it here, if they're present, and if they're available.
Good afternoon, Richard Burr, eleven to the set place, South River. First, I'd like to speak to our outgoing mayor and councilman, John Krenzel. You're one of the people I remember the first time I met. It was October twenty-third, twenty seventeen, at breakfast at dinner. Three days after we closed down the house. The only person I knew from South River was Cindy Book. And after I introduced you, I said I had worked for Cindy in the state. And you said, "You work for Cindy Book? Do you wanna be on the planning board?" And now, Cindy Book is nationally nominated in the construction code and fire code agreements. And somebody on her staff would be the kind of person we'd want to appoint to a planning board or something like this. So, what you don't know is that if it loaned in confidence to be part of a deliberative body back when I was in college, I had the opportunity to be appointed to Assembly. I kind of saw it, and then seeing the interesting work that they did, I re-predited that decision. And thanks to you, one of my bucket list items has been checked out. The planning board is not disappointed. It's extraordinarily interesting work, from the minute details that the applicants presented in the application to law. It's definitely rewarding and satisfying work, and I'm grateful for you appointing me to the board for that. I'll have a number of treasured John Krenzel memories moving forward. The best one, of course, will be when you officiated at my wedding in twenty eighteen. And New Jersey law grants former mayor's the permission to officiate against the rest of the laws. Thank you for that. So, I had originally protested months ago that Peter Johnson switched seats as county compromise, and it's the circuitous route that we took to get here, but there we are. And all the reasons I said then would hold true today. I spoke with favor of your nomination and committee. And, you know, as one of two Republicans, one of the presidential leaders, you can choose to run for the full term, you'd be a formidable candidate. And from the administrative standpoint, knowledge and experience and institutional knowledge is certainly an asset to this body working for. So, I'm grateful that you have chosen to remain involved. So, thank you for that. Now, to our new mayor, Ed Rex. Wow, I mean, if I had to pick one word, it would be historical. And your involvement since you joined us, the Republicans in twenty eighteen, has been historic. The historical way here, more than seventy towns switched from Republican to Democratic control, but only two towns switched the other way. One was Borough Bellomar, and the other was the Borough of South River, with the legislature in Denny. It began in twenty twenty-one, when we swept all fourteen election businesses in town. And then here in twenty, uh, I said, twenty twenty-three, you know, one of the contested primaries, a challenger, led our ticket to a historic six-month sweep, won by the largest margin in years as mayor. And, but it's also historic in that we, in South River, have elected the first Egyptian-American mayor in the state of New Jersey, and only the second one in the United States. Your campaign was bold. I loved the billboard, it was genius.
It's a different.
So, and your ideas, your, uh, from the one improvements to the other ideas, I look forward to what the borough can accomplish with your leadership. And don't worry, I will continually attend council meetings and bother you in the same manner that I bothered Mayor Krenzel for the past six years, given my ideas both crackpot and practical. And my occasional non-secretors, like the sad stories saga of poor Governor Moscow evidently, when I had to come across them. So, I thank you, and I look forward to the deep service moving forward as well. And now, all of the council members, I've said this before, and so many times, you folks come up here, take on this job, and all you hear is complaints and problems from the public, and not often enough, there's something to get up here. And thank you guys for stepping forward and taking on this job, which is mostly thank, not thankless. And especially for our newest new councilman, I will make it a point to remind you that I am grateful for your service, taking on these jobs here. It's worthy work, it's work worth doing, it's work worth doing well. So, I thank every one of you for your efforts and work, both in the past and in the future. So, twenty twenty-four, let's make that a banner.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everybody, Sophie.
Yes, my name is Demi Hervich, and I'm a visitor here today. And I just want to say personal congratulations to everyone, mayor, Mr. Grchinsky, and most of all, my cousin Hank. Very proud of you. I am so happy I was able to make it today. And I am out of town, but I do love South River. And thank you for letting me speak again, as a congratulations.
The show's only been on for all of these months, it's twenty-five months from here. Mid-term is South River, our upsets. So, any problems that you trip over and get into the bunch as well, so it's now a best request for personal problems trying to handle. First of all, congratulations to Mayor Peter Gidding and the entire council station. I also want to, Rick Burr mentioned you guys do not get enough credit. A lot of people are thankful for the challenge. Maybe I will contribute thank goodness for all the hard work you do. I tell a lot of people, if you have a problem in your town, do not call White House. You call the local council, which is the council of the state, just as mayor. So, it's all was part of all. So, a lot of work gets done at the council level, at Borough level in this case, designing communication, the policy language myself, and the level of the part work. I appreciate the variety. Also, I will take the opportunity to appreciate the Borough of South River, which made it the first one of my events in October. A presser of Mount of Borough Vision, live in, which is a goal to focus on, sustainable development, and four-way integration. And I did invite Borough of South River, we had a event next door, that I mentioned at the year of the school. I was told I would have to thank, at the time, Mayor Krenzel, at the time, Councilman Peter Gidding, and has been on the brush, taking time, thinking about that. South River, the final commission, it's doing a great job. I'm blessed to appreciate that, and I hope you guys continue doing that and I like the work and close partnership with the chapter in extending all the work of our power. Thank you very much, and I hope that everybody is happy and.
Good afternoon, Jim Hugson, thirty-eight of the industry. First of all, Happy New Year. Sort of wish everybody a great twenty twenty-four. Sixteen years ago, I stood up here to feel just like you do. I want to congratulate you for stepping forward, taking on this role, and auditioning all of that. People would be incredibly proud of you. Just to kind of recall you, that we all have, in your state, working for Borough of South River, residents, taxpayers, and business owners, everything associated with that here in South River. And that I agree, we gotta move forward, move forward with great and great opportunities in order to make the South River bigger, better, and making it jewels in the West County, jewels to the world. Jimmy, congratulations. When I was running, I asked you to run with me. And I congratulate you, continue up here as a member of the Borough. Mr. Mayor, congratulations. We've been friends for a long time. I wish you all the best, obviously, our administration all the best. And the end of the report is a lot of changes, a lot of good things. Mr. Council President, congratulations. Certainly, that great shoes with the crow, Mr. Seagull. And I guess I had maybe a toward to the year shoes, too. It's interesting, too, I want to congratulate and thank my fellow mayor, Mr. Krenzel, for your hard work, your leadership for the years, not only as a mayor, as a councilman, as a friend. Thank you, John, we appreciate that. It's nice, too, to have two former mayors sitting up here, two former mayors and acting there. And I think everybody else wants to be mayor to watch. But, again, congratulations. I wish you all the best in this new role. You are all ambitious in town. You talk about, I'm specifically, water issues. I just wanna say that past meetings I've put forward, I have a limited knowledge, and I feel I will give my entire support to the opportunity to make some ideas all paid for any reasons. I'm a hundred percent waiting to be in the amount of what, exactly, beyond. And if you need a plus, you want it, yeah, we should all be all the best. Happy twenty twenty-four, let's make it a great year, congratulations.
Anyone else from the public? Once, twice. Motion to close.
Second.
Motion by, uh, Tony Seal, seconded by Councilmember Shitney. I've got one body, uh, talking. Well, I just wish everybody a happy, healthy new year, and everybody stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, I'd like to thank everybody in Borough South River who have our work cut out for us. We're here for you, like I said, once again, thank you. Thank you again.
Well, thanks again, everybody, for committing this attitude, working this town. And just keep in mind, it's for the town, it's for the residents, which has been echoed by the past council members and the current members. We are here to do everything we can for this borough. Thank you for this opportunity. Look forward to the next year. Happy New Year.
Looking forward to the new year. I'm here to help Mayor Giddy, and wish him the very best in all his endeavors.
Thank you all for coming today. My fact up here is we are all South River high school graduates. And I think we're pretty proud, different years, but everyone on the council. I want to congratulate everyone today and wish everyone a happy and healthy new year. Thank you.
Once again, just wanted to congratulate Peter, Hank, Peter on the whim. Want to wish everyone a happy new year. That is all I have. Thank you.
Board of Education, for running us this facility. So everyone, thank you again for coming. Happy New Year and a happy, healthy day. Joining us, thank you. Adjournment by Councilman Seal, seconded by President, Council President Oliver. All adjourned.